Saying none, has everybody had a chance to review the meeting minutes of December 7?
I did.
I have not. I just looked at it. I saw, I was reading my emails. I see I got a link to it, but I didn't have a chance to go through the minutes as of yet.
Would you like to wait until the next meeting?
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. So 4.1 on the agenda. Dave Calhoun, Saxon Partners, Mechanic Street Realty Trust. Going to give a presentation tonight on the Mechanic Street property.
Good evening, Board of Selectmen. My name is Dave Calhoun. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm joined by Jack Lefle. Thanks for seeing us and hearing us this evening. I guess we're your sole entertainment. But if it's all right with the board, we'd like to just give you a three-minute rundown on Saxon, walk you through the apartment market we see in your area, and then get right to the meat of things that we would like to talk to you about doing a friendly 40B that would get the town of Upton to their 10% under the SHI program for Mass Housing Program. So with that being said, if it's okay, can we screen share?
Yeah. Yeah, Dave, just give me a second. I'm gonna give you privileges in one second.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Got a notice.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Go ahead and share this now.
Okay. Saxon Development is a real estate development company founded by Gary Dahman and Don Smith. We've been in business for over 25 years. Most of us, except for Jack and a few of the other people on staff, have been in the real estate development business, I would say, on average, in excess of 35 years. We are privately funded company. We are able to do our developments without the need of outside resources, and we try to do different things. We try to focus on, if you don't mind paging through here, Jack, a bit, if you don't mind going back to the Saxon website. What we do, we do various developments, usually from the ground up. We find the land, we entitle it, we build it, we hold it. Sometimes we sell it. But the most important thing I think we should look at is some of our completed projects that you might be familiar with. Under the commercial side, if you don't mind, Jack. This is the largest outdoor lifestyle center in eastern Massachusetts. It's also the most successful, and many of you may know it if you travel Route 3 to the Cape. This is right at the intersection of Route 3 and 44 in Plymouth. It was a couple hundred acres that we bought, permitted, and developed every single piece of this infrastructure, including the off-ramps, the roads, the traffic lights. We're all designed, financed, and built by us, and it has been just a great success. We recently sold off the last piece of it to a firm out of Texas. The last two pieces of it are residential. One is a 320-unit 40B that we did last year and is now under construction by the Hanover Company out of Texas. And the final piece is going to be built by Claremont. We just sold that off to them last week, and they're going to do a couple hundred units of age-restricted rental product. It's been a great asset for the town of Plymouth and a great asset for us. From a residential standpoint, probably the best-known project, we did a thousand-unit development in Middleborough. It's a thousand homes, called El Point, and it's a thousand homes on a thousand acres. And again, a giant success for the town of Middleborough and a giant success for us. And the people that live there truly have embraced the lifestyle and the amenities that we provide. And as you can see by our entries and the product we do, we take a lot of pride in trying to produce a product that is better than the market has seen in a long time. If you don't mind going back where we work, we basically work coast-to-coast, north-to-south. What we have out on the west coast are primarily just commercial properties which are held. On the east coast and in the Midwest is where we're doing more of our residential, from Florida to Maine to Carolinas out to Colorado is where we're working. Going from there, I think probably the quickest thing for us to look at would be the Upton market. And Jack, if you don't mind just walking quickly through this slide.
Sure. So we've been looking for various markets in Massachusetts and towns that kind of fit the growth opportunity we see. So Upton was a very clear choice for that. We're very impressed with all the numbers from the population growth, the commute to Boston, various places of employment, the median home income value, median household income. Those are both strong numbers and growing. The school system is very strong. So with that being said, we thought it was a great market. And the thing that caught our eye was that the subsidized housing inventory was below the 10% threshold currently with 145 units. So we thought that'd be a good opportunity for us to work with the city.
The other item is, when you look at the town of Upton, there has not been a new rental product produced since 2000. Most recent is the 44 units pictured here, which from what everyone has told us has been a great success. There's a waiting list to get in there. The people enjoy it, and it's a nicely done product. From there, we looked at the Upton Housing Production Plan, and obviously, the key items point out, partner with the developers to produce new affordable housing units, support through permitting advocacy, and monitor and maintain the subsidized housing inventory to ensure you're over 10%. You're at 5.1%. So our goal is to hopefully by doing a large, single rental project of 320 units on the 94.22 acres we have in the contract over Mechanic Street, we would get you to your 10% and then some, so that your planning board would never have to deal with developers who are trying to do, say, eight units on a single acre in the heart of town, or trying to use the 40B process to create subdivisions where they can't. And with that said, if you don't mind, Jack, let's move to the site in our conceptual layout. As you can see, it's a very, very big piece of property. We have frontage on Mechanic Street, two sections of frontage. We also have frontage down on Fowler Street. The goal would be to come off of Mechanic Street with what we would call a Parkway System, which basically has a center lane that is divided by a garden deem, and would have one or two lanes on either side of it, so that there's no problems with access. We would put the development as far off the road as we could and away from the neighbors, and there really aren't many neighbors that will be able to even see the development when it's done. We also want to go with smart development practices and smart growth practices, which is try to go as dense as you possibly can and stay on a small footprint. So when we're done with this process, the actual 320 units would sit on roughly 20 acres. We would then take the remaining 74 acres and determine what the highest and best use for those acreages are while protecting the privacy or the remoteness of the development. So we'd probably look to, if there's interested parties that want to increase their lots, we'd look to sell off portions of that. But most likely, most of the land would be going into some type of conservation trust or gifted to some type of conservation group, where the land could be used for recreation and enjoyment, passive recreation enjoyment, hiking, and that type of thing. The project we're proposing would be four floors. It would be 320 units. It's a mixture of ones, twos, and threes. The three bedrooms is limited to basically 10%, the total unit count, because that's what the state requires us to do. And it also reduces the tendency of families to live on the property. The project would be surface park with some freestanding parking garages for those who would like those. We would have, I believe, it's 642 parking spaces. We may, if the project is well received, we may ask to put some of that parking into what we call bank parking. In other words, we create the parking area, but it's left as a lawn area, so that we're not overparking and creating an excessive amount of asphalt. If we find we need the parking, then we can always take up the loan and the sod and pave the area, increase more parking, but we won't be doing excess parking. The project, we hope, would be serviced by Town Sewer, Town Water. We would be looking to work with the town to bring the sewer line down to the property, and obviously, we would be doing that at our own cost. We would be having 25% of our apartments would be affordable at 80% of the area of median income. And that would bring, because it is a rental product versus a for-sale product, you would gain full credit for the full 320 units, where if we were doing a condominium project, there would only be 20% of the units would need to be affordable, and you would only get credit for the actual 20%. Don't mind, Jack, is there, can we go to the slide with a blow-up of it that shows the property? Is it zooming in? Yes, yeah. Right there. We had this slide prepared just so the board could see the amount of open space that we're preserving and that we're pushing this as close as we can back to the high-tension wires in protecting the interests of the owners. With that being said, maybe you, I don't know if you want to see the images or the quality of what we do. This project will be fully amenitized with probably roughly about 10,000 square feet of athletic, in common area amenities. Jack, you might just give them a quick picture of what that typically looks like. Right there. We include things such as dog parks, spin classrooms, yoga rooms, weightlifting rooms, a very, very large community area where people can gather and have private events and have a sense of community. We also include other basics, dog washes, bite barns, all the other things that the current market really looks for. And that's basically it in a nutshell. In, open to any questions, and if there's anything else we can dig into for you, we're here.
Steve or Brett, any questions?
Yeah, I mean, what, so that's a residential area now, right, with sort of a lot of single-family homes on large lots. So I don't know how this fits within the zoning of that area, or if it's consistent with the sort of look and feel and character of that area of the town. So I'm curious about that, your perspective on that, and also just the sheer volume of traffic impact for that area and those neighborhoods.
As far as zoning, obviously, this does not mean zoning, and that's why it's being done in a 40B. But what we are doing is our goal is by putting the development off the street, when you drive by, you won't know about the character of the town or the neighborhood, because all you're going to see is a nice stone entry. And then obviously, the building will be up the driveway in a way you won't be able to see the building. The buildings obviously are going to be first-class, they're going to be four stories. The reason why we do four stories is because what it enables you to do is you compress your footprint, so you're touching less and less of the earth in achieving the maximum density, the maximum opportunities for people to live. By doing that, you're also doing a development that from a density standpoint, if you take 320 units and you divide it by 94 acres, it wouldn't be considered a dense development. And in order for the town of Upton to get to their 40B 10%, you would have to have, I don't know how many projects, small projects, to achieve that. And the other thing that is a tremendous benefit is by doing the density at one location, you're achieving residence for 320 homes. And even if kids do come to school here, it's only one bus stop. The bus comes to the front entry, and the kids are picked up there. Whereas if you have a subdivision or enough growth to get to your 10%, you then have to build roads, infrastructure, then add multiple buses to get those kids. And then in addition to that, you have to deal with fire response times and everything else. These buildings will be fully sprinkled, and they will be fully elevated in the sense that they're all serviced by elevators. So what is very appealing, we have found recently, is that many people over 55 love the opportunity for a new rental product, first class, with an elevator, with amenities in their town, because they look at their property and they say, okay, my kids have graduated from school, they've left. I have this big house. I would like to downstart. But because the real estate market is so hot, they can sell their 3,500-square-foot house for $7, $800,000. But to replace it and buy a 2,500-square-foot house, they gotta put all that money back into it. And many seniors are looking at it and saying, you know what? If I move to this apartment building, I can stay in town, keep my place here. I don't have to worry if I get challenged by health issues. I have elevators. I have amenities. I'm not out in the weather. I have neighbors that can look out for me. So they can continue to stay in town without having the burden of the real estate. As far as traffic, I think the traffic engineers will be able to do a very detailed study of the area, and I think they'll be able to demonstrate that the traffic will not have an impact on the area, because when you look at residential traffic, especially with more and more people working from home, you don't have this mass exits in the morning or the mass entry as if you have a commercial building or even a school at this location. Not everybody has to be there at 8:00, and not everybody has to be home at 5:00. So the population gets distributed over 24 hours. And we believe that many of the people that will be working here and living here, excuse me, will probably be commuting to hospitals in the general area, whether it's in Worcester, or it's Milford, or it's in Boston or Providence. So they are traveling a lot of hours. But we would undertake a very detailed traffic study to make sure their impacts were not something that's lowering the service levels in the area.
What about like the traffic in the area? I think is, you know, I understand, right, there's traffic congestion, but there's also sort of frequency on these small back roads, right? So Mechanic Street, Fowler Street, those areas, those are quiet country roads and not necessarily conducive to a lot of traffic and cars going back and forth while there are people walking dogs on these country roads. So I think it was more asking from that perspective as opposed to a traffic congestion perspective.
Okay. I think we could look at different quieting measures if needed, if they found it was a problem. But I just don't think there's going to be a volume that is going to really create a problem for the walkers or the bikers.
Our job is to represent the community, so I'm not sure what the neighbors or people that live in that area would agree with you, but I appreciate your positioning for sure.
Just kind of a follow-up along the same lines. You had mentioned parking situation. You've got 320 units. You mentioned the amount of parking that you'd have. So that's gonna kind of give us an indication of how many registered vehicles and what we're really gonna see for a traffic increase. So could you kind of go over those numbers one more time? I know you said you have some additional parking that wouldn't be paved, but you're gonna have X number of asphalt spots that you're planning.
Right now, when you do a parking study on a new multifamily project in the greater Upton area, they're finding that the parking ratios are going down and down. If you're, for example, if you're inside 128, sometimes they present that, you know, your parking should be at .5 spaces per apartment. And then when you get out to the suburbs, it's .97. I just completed a traffic study for a project right on 128, and the parking ratio that was, that the industry presented, not us, was that it needed .97. At this location, we feel that we would be fine with a parking ratio of like 1.1, 1.2. We're carrying two spaces per unit, because I believe that's what your zoning, your current parking zoning looks for per apartment. But that's what we have. We think that's overparked, so we don't see that parked number of cars coming into play. Many people that are renting, you know, especially younger folks, they don't even want a car. They want an Uber, or they want a ride-share program of some form. So we've planned it out for 642 spaces, but we would prefer to not do that.
And? What kind of, what kind of a timeline do you have for this project?
The project, if you tell us that, you know, you'd like to pursue a friendly 40B, the next step would be to actually, if you took formally a formal vote tonight and said, yes, we'd like to pursue a friendly 40B, the next step would be to start working on a regulatory agreement slash a development agreement with the town. Once we get that in place, we would then file for our project eligibility letter with Mass Housing. It will probably take to prepare that application for them. That'll probably take about 60 days. That'll get filed. The board would then, excuse me, we would then have to wait for that to come back from Mass Housing, which takes about 60 to 90 days. Once that is back, we would then file with the ZBA about 30 days after, and depending upon the permitting process, hopefully it does not take any more than six months. Once that's issued, we would break ground 30 days later. So the goal would be, if everything went great, would be to be in the ground before the end of next year and to bring apartments online about 14 months later. So you would see occupancy in 2024, first part of 2024.
And when will you be doing your traffic study?
We would do our traffic study. That would be one of the first things that we would be doing. As soon as we got our project eligibility letter back, we would be completing our traffic study, and we would be working with the ZBA on that to get there, to make sure that we had everything covered.
Well, I would ask the board, I don't, I'm not ready to take a formal vote tonight until we see some more design or traffic studies. I don't know how the other two members feel.
I mean, I have a few more questions. If you have, not, that's fine, too.
Okay.
I know, Steve, it sounded like you had a couple of questions. So why don't you go ahead, Steve, and finish your thought.
I did have a follow-up. Really, I think what I was gonna say, more so than questions, is if you have a presentation that's in, you know, that's in print, that we could really take it, give it a good read and a good study, you know, this is a lot to digest in one meeting and try to digest in the next 30 to 45 minutes. I agree with the chairman, Maureen. Yeah, I would definitely not be ready to take a vote this evening, and once more time to really, you know, wrap my head around this. And what I was really gonna get around to is, you mentioned earlier, the septic. I believe there is Town Water on Mechanic Street. I'm not sure where the septic ends. So does anybody have that answer as far as where, where right now would your ability to tie into Town septic be?
We would be tying into the Town Sewer system, and I believe it's within a half a mile of the site.
So I assume it must be at the end of, must be on Route 140 at the end of Mechanic Street? Is that, is that right?
I'd have to confirm, but I believe it's in that area. But the benefit of doing that, obviously, is the town would be getting more and more sewer coverage. You get more and more people tying in using your sewer, more users or income, and it would also give the ability of the people along that route, the ability to tie in.
I have to give you both credit. You're very good salesmen. We appreciate that. Clearly adding, you know, 320 units of housing on 20 acres with four levels of living with one means of access and egress in a country road, it puts a significant strain on the infrastructure, whether it's roads or water and sewer, right? You're talking about 320 units. That's a whole lot of water and waste. And so it's not just as easy as hooking up a line from our existing lines. I mean, that's got a significant downstream effect on all of the infrastructure. In terms of water and sewer, I'm no expert, but we have experts. But I know enough to know that when you go from having a few houses on a country road to adding a 320-unit mixture of one, two, and three-bedroom housing units, that that's not an insignificant impact on the community, the aesthetic and the character of the community, as well as the physical infrastructure that's in place. I would have significant reservations about supporting an effort like this in our town, in this community, just given, given, you know, where we are. I understand all of the points that you make, and that's, you know, it's clear to me what they are. I understand the pros and cons. You're not telling us things we don't know. Certainly, you're positioning them from your perspective, which is expected. But I think you will be very hard-pressed to convince people that this is something that's good for the town, and certainly would be probably harder-pressed to convince me.
Any other questions? And to your point, Steve, I would like for you maybe to send the information to the board so that we can go through it and what the expectations are for amount of flow for sewer and the amount of water. You must, have you done studies on that? Have you contacted the DPW or?
We have not formally spoken with the DPW, but I believe you have water and sewer. I believe you have plant capacity. Obviously, we would have to do, ensure that enough, the main in front of our property is sufficient for us. I think you probably have a fairly decent-sized main in the street. The flows from this size project are nowhere near the flow as you get from a single-family home, but we could provide those calculations to you. The sewer is also something that we can look at and provide you with calculations on that. If the sewer is not something that you want us to tie into, then we can If the sewer is not something that you want us to tie into, then we can achieve the sewer on site. We can do our own private wastewater system. And I just want to correct one thing. We're, we're doing this on 94 acres. We're not developing it on just 20 acres. The actual physical parcel that will probably remain as the apartment property will only be 20 acres. We would be looking to most likely donate to open space the remaining properties of 74 acres.
That was, that was very clear to me. Thank you for.
So the, in, as far as, you know, the aesthetics and, and the character, I think if you, if you really look at the development concept and when we work with your, your planning board and your zoning board, I think we can achieve a quality of, of a product that is, is going to be truly a benefit to the town. You know, these buildings, it's an investment. Everything we do has to be investment quality. So we have to make sure that it's going to be first class. We are not doing a cheap building. I mean, these buildings is very, very well thought out, planned out. And obviously the goal is to make it so that people want to live here. And we think we can, we can capture the market. We think we can do well. The size of the project, we could do a project that's half the size. And, and we don't need the support of the town, but we're looking to get you past your, you know, your 40B requirement in one opportunity. So that's the benefit of doing a friendly 40B and doing a single large project rather than having multiple projects all over town. The other thing that I think is beneficial to the town is this type of project will probably bring on order of magnitude, eight to $900,000 a year in real estate taxes. It will bring another substantial amount of excise tax revenues. If you look at it and you say, well, there'll only be 400 vehicles there, 400 vehicles, the average car is worth 20 grand, you know, times $25 in value. That alone is a big income generated for the town. So I truly respect your, your desires for us to try to keep things, the country road and everything else. And that's why we're putting the project so far away from the street. Not that we don't think it's going to be beautiful, but we knew when we came to the board, one of the first things people would say is, well, I, I don't want to be driving down a country road and all of a sudden see a four story building. But if you see a beautiful stone wall and nice landscaped entry, you may be a little bit more receptive to it. I can't hear you.
While we have our DPW director on, this might be a good, good time to just get an idea as far as, you know, what, you know, again, you had mentioned this, the size of the project, frankly, it's, it's much bigger than anything that, you know, my experience in town that we've come across. We have another project in town that's a condo complex. It's, I want to say 136 or 139 units. So this is far greater in, as far as the, you know, impact on the community. So again, I'd like to just get the opinion of our DPW director, see what his thoughts are as far as water and sewer and, you know, is this even feasible to even consider something like this?
For the chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Dennis Westgate. I'm the Director of Public Works here in Upton. And this is the first opportunity I've had to take a look at this project, even though it's just a presentation and I really don't have any plans in front of me. There is water on Mechanic Street, you're correct. That section of Mechanic Street that you're talking about is the very first section between 140 and Fowler. I just paved that road last year. Curb to curb. So the thought of ripping up a brand new, brand new paved road doesn't exactly give me a warm fuzzy feeling, but that's neither here nor there. I'm not exactly sure where wastewater terminates in that area. It might be 140 or the line may come into Mechanic for a short distance. I know that the majority of Mechanic does not have wastewater. As for the size of the line, I'm not, I believe that's an eight inch. It could be a 10 on that. I, I don't think we'd have any problem meeting demands of daily withdrawals. It would just be the fire suppression. We would have to make sure we could keep up with a pump if you had to have one or anything like that. My biggest concern since Selectman Battalion brought it up, my biggest concern would be traffic. 320 units has the ability to generate a good amount of daily traffic flow. So I would recommend during, if you do a traffic study, that you take a look at daily counts now and peak flows now versus what you project will be daily counts and peak flows with 320 units. Because Mechanic Street is one of our smaller, narrower roads in town. It's very windy, hilly road. And like Selectman Seema said, it's, it's, it is a very small road. I can't picture a traffic increase of that size on that road.
If I could just jump in for one second, I think it would be important for Mr. Calhoun from Saxon to just, to describe the differences in what he's referring to as a 40B project. So he made mention of, I don't know if anybody picked up on it, that given the size of this project, the Board of Selectmen would have to approve a 40B project being this large. Now, I believe a project like this would, would not need Board of Selectmen approval if it was half the size, so approximately 160 units, thereabouts. So just keep that in mind that if Saxon Partners were to acquire this property, they necessarily wouldn't need the town's support if they, if they developed a 40B project around 160 units, still in this neighborhood, still on the same street, you know, the windy street, narrow street that Dennis just described. But the fact, the reason why Saxon is in front of the board this evening is because it's 100, it's a, sorry, it's a 320 unit project, which exceeds the maximum amount allowed without Selectmen approval. So I just wanted to make that known. Dave, I'm sure you have some more insight to that.
If, if, if you don't mind, the, this, if the project, because of the size of your town, there's a formula that the state applies and if, that you're not supposed to do a 40B without consent or support, if it's greater than 6% of the current number of dwelling units in town. So I think the number calculates out that we could do 160, maybe 180 units, depend upon the latest unit count in town. And we would never come to the Board of Selectmen. We would never go to the planning board. We would never go to any of the other departments. We just file for a project eligibility letter, state issues it, we file with the ZBA and we just march through the process. And we would, under that scenario, we could tie into the water, we could tie into the sewer. And as you probably know, traffic is not an obligation of a 40B developer. The infrastructure or the lack of infrastructure or the roads that are not sufficient under the 40B process are not the responsibility of the developer, they're the responsibility of the municipality. So when it's not a friendly 40B, you get all the issues dumped on you and there's not much you can do about it. Because eventually the developer will prevail. You have no input on the design. You have no input on the setback. So a not friendly 40B developer could go and put 160 units and they could do it on as small a footprint as they wanted, right up against the street. Yes, and it'd be nothing you could do. You'd be stuck with it. Whereas when you do a friendly 40B, it's more of a give and take in a cooperative program where you try to gain as much input as you can from the local boards. You try to work with the planning board to create an image that most people, even if they go up the roadway would like. You work with the DPW to try to make improvements, you know, along the road and to create, you know, a better environment. So it's a very different relationship when you do quote, a hostile 40B. That's what they are. The, you know, when you do a hostile 40B, you usually show up and you say, I'd like to introduce my project manager, its attorney, such and such. And that's the way it goes. And it's not fun. But your hands are not tied. I, I mean, you can do what you want and it's all about making money and getting out of town. We're not looking to do that. Chances are, if we do not get a friendly 40B, we will not go forward. We are not looking to get in the middle of a brawl with the town. There's too many other places to do nice developments where towns want to get to their 10%. And most towns that are at the 10% have found that their 40Bs have been very successful tools because they've implemented them on their own schedule. And, and it works. And so, yes, you can say I'm a good salesman. I appreciate that. I'd rather say I'm a better developer. But either way, we have to do both. We have to convince you guys that it's the right thing to do. And we recently, before another town, and we met with the planning board and they asked us, would you do a preliminary traffic study and have your guys look at it and get us a quick summary of what they think is going to happen? So we did that. And it gave them the comfort level that they were going to be able to get what they wanted done and it wouldn't impact, you know, the safety of the people in the area and the people that like to walk and bike. I mean, we want to make the area receptive because otherwise the people renting, they walk. If people rented this property and all of a sudden they realize they can't go jogging, they can't go biking, they go to another property. So it's all market driven and with your cooperation and support, we would be thrilled to do it. But if you don't want to do it, you know, please tell us, hey, no way. We don't want to do this, guys. Don't spend any money. And we'll politely say thank you very much.
I don't think anybody wants to be hostile, but we don't have very much information on the project itself.
No, I, I would, I would, I would clarify, right? Like if you, if you start one of these conversations with a soft hand and you don't feel like you're getting support, you come in and give the examples. I'm not saying you, I'm saying all developers do this, right? We've all, we've all been around long enough to know that people come in and they use the 40B as leverage to, to try to push these projects through. And, and that's great. That's fine. We know the model. We, we've done this dance before. So, you know, certainly you have my perspective on doing this project in, in this location. You know, and, and it sounds like Steve and Maureen are interested in more information, maybe others are interested in more information. My recommendation would be to not spend another dollar on a project of this scale and magnitude on this site.
Okay. Is the rest of the board of the same mindset?
I don't know.
I am, as far as the size of the project.
Okay. What would be, what is the driver when you say size? Because that's where people always seem to, to say, oh, it's too many units.
I feel, I feel it is too many units. And I mean, I, I've been down Mechanic Street. It is very narrow. And like the DPW director said, he's already repaved, curbed to curb. And there is no room to put a bicycle lane in there. There's no room for people to walk on that street. I do have a problem with the traffic.
Well, I, I think if, if we could satisfy you, or the engineer, it's not us, could satisfy you that the traffic can be properly mitigated. I mean, we didn't show a secondary access out to Fowler because we felt the neighbors would prefer to see it coming out at one location and giving them more privacy. So that's why we didn't go out to Fowler. We can split the traffic. We can send it out different ways. We can do a preliminary traffic report, but we don't want to go and do a traffic report and it comes back and it says, this will be okay. And then it's still, no, it's too big of a project. If, if there's some guidance that, okay, gentlemen, if you can come back and you can bring a traffic report that shows an analysis of what's happening and it won't impact the area, then you will possibly get the votes. But if it's still going to be a no, if it's still, you know, forget it. We totally respect that. And we're being, you know, we do not want to do 160 unit project. It's too small. The properties, when you do a smaller project, you don't have the ability to staff them up and, and take care of them within full-time staff. It's, it's a management company that comes by and checks on the property. Whereas we like to do a bigger project that has almost the equivalent of a concierge service. There's someone almost always there or at least nine to five every single day. We don't want to be absentee landlords because those properties quickly go downhill. And yeah, they're moneymakers for the guys that own them, but it's not what we want to do. But if there's other items, if you wanted us to come back with a traffic study, and as far as Dennis is concerned about the paving, if we have to touch your road or improve your road, we got to bring it back to a standard that satisfies the DPW. That's all there is to it. And if, and if they decide that we have to because we go down the middle of it, we got to pave it curb to curb, we got to grind it and pave it curb to curb. You know, but the other thing that the town should look at is you have a lot of big parcels in town and they're out there and realtors aggressively looking to sell them for large developments. And, you know, this would give you the control back and give the control back to your planning board.
If I may, you know, I, I look at the project and I, I'm looking at it, trying to keep an open mind. And I say, look, the next proposal may not be Saxon Partners. The next proposal may be a different developer. And if the 160 units doesn't require any input from the Board of Selectmen, then we're stuck with what we have. We get 160 units, we have no input other than obviously tie in water, you know, zoning laws, things of that nature. 320, I feel like, you know, that's a long shot for a small country road. You know, I've got to really get a look up the road. I know the road pretty well. I don't know exactly where the entrance is to this parcel. I know it's somewhere at the corner of Fowler Street there, but I'd like that, something that I've got to kind of really put an eyeball on it. But, you know, by all means, I feel like out in the country here, two parking spots per unit is, you know, is right on the money. So that's 642, that's the cars that are going to be most likely garaged on that premises or parked, I should say, on that premises. So that is a significant increase for that road. Probably, probably too much for my liking, but again, by the same token, I'm looking at it this way. If anybody can come in and build 160 units and we think 320 is too many, you know, what is the right number? You know, what is, is there a workable number that's, you know, between there? You know, does any of that make sense? If you have 320 units, it's four stories, you know, basic division's going to tell me that's 80 units per floor. What if instead of, you know, four floors, it's three floors? So that becomes 240. Is that still too many? Again, and Brett, for you, that absolutely may be. But my only concern is if we drop the gavel and say, no, that's, that's fine. I, you know, we could do that. But what happens if 160 units, you know, gets dumped in our lap and we have very little input into what happens?
Yeah, I, I certainly, we can't foretell the future, but there's also another scenario, which is, you know, we're very frank with these developers and we're clear with them what our intent and our focus and our priorities are for that space. And maybe in another six months, somebody comes in and says, okay, I've got 90, 90 acre, 90 plus acres and you have zoning laws and I'm going to put in a nice 45 house, single family residential development with two. with two-acre lot minimums, uh, 240 feet of frontage, um, and adhere to all of your zoning bylaws? I mean, I think that would be a pretty good trade-off.
And just to speak to that, if you don't mind, Madam Chair. When you, when you, that's the exact opposite of what most people want to see as far as smart growth. I mean,
Hold on, hold on, you, I'm gonna allow you to say that, or the chair, that's fine. We all know about smart growth and we all know about cluster developments. That's why when I say this, I'm just sharing my opinion. I've been chairman of various, uh, planning board. I'm very familiar with that. Certainly if you want to educate the other people here about that, you know, certainly go ahead and do that.
Well, these,
Sure, we have to labor the whole topic. I think that, you know, we should kind of digest what we've got in front of us, you know, before, again, before we beat it to death, you know? Because again, we've got a lot of single-family home developments in town. I don't think mechanic's a great spot for an apartment complex. However, you do have that privacy aspect. It is insulated where it's that far off. You know, if you have the ability to cut half the traffic on Fowler Street, you know, are any of those important, you know, important determining factors? I don't know. I hear all the time, there's no, you know, there's no affordable way to live in Upton. Is this an affordable way to live in Upton? I don't have the answer. I tend to be, you know, sometimes a little too negative. I'm just trying to keep an open mind.
I am very familiar with 40Bs and the project, in my estimation, is too big. And I, if it could be cut back or cut down, like Steve said, but it seems that you don't want to do that.
The, the reason why we don't want to do that, Madam Chair, is when you, when you take a floor off a building, you then eliminate elevators. So the building is not as well-received by those that have handicaps or those that have abilities to get, you know, challenges in getting around. So the building becomes less desirable. Um, the simplest way to do this project and probably the most profitable way is to take the whole 94 acres and do garden-style product, which eats up the whole 94 acres, and you're done. But you're doing garden-style product, which is not attractive, which is not contemporary. Uh, our goal is to take, as I said before, the 320, keep it in as small area as possible, and then we'll take the rest of the land and we'll preserve it forever for open space.
At this point, I can't support a 300, uh, unit project. I don't know how you members feel about it. I, well, I know how you feel about it, Brett.
Is there anyone in the audience that we need to ask questions for?
They're, they're more than welcome to speak. I don't see any. So at this point, I thank you for the presentation. I understand where you are coming from, but that area of town will not support, in my estimation, a 320-unit project. So at this point, I couldn't say that I would vote to support it. Any other questions?
Is that, is that a vote or is that just the chair?
I'm asking for if there are any other questions and then we'll take a formal vote.
I mean, the only thing I can think of, Madam Chair, if you want, if it makes you feel better about it. Um, you know, all the engineering, I, I believe will show that the location works very well. For, I mean, the density of this development is three units per acre. That's not dense development.
But the number, the number of units don't, uh, the roads can't support.
I, I think the engineers will show you that it can. I mean, when you look at it and you say, okay, if, even if you said there's 620 vehicles here, which there never will be, over 24-hour period, you're looking at only adding on average about 20 cars an hour. You can't even measure that.
I think we've,
At that also, I ju- I cannot support a project of this size in that area.
Okay, I understand your position, Madam Chair.
We ready to take a vote?
I, I don't know that we need to take a vote, but we, we should move on. I think we've made our position pretty clear.
Okay. We have no.
Is, is the position, there's, there's no support for this or is it position?
There would be no support at 320 units is the position of the board at this point. Is that correct?
Yes.
And there's, what is the number that you would support, if I can ask?
That, that's, we, we gotta move on. So you, you had a question, you don't want to do less than 320. I, I don't need to hear anything else. So if you want to come back with a different proposal, come back with a different proposal. We're happy to discuss it. Uh, we, we don't need to discuss it now.
It's, it wouldn't be appropriate to simply, you know, is there a number that you have in mind, just so we can come back to you and say, okay, that is doable or it's not?
No, we have to move on from here.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time, we appreciate it. Uh, Town Manager, thank you very much for your time. You were great in bringing this together and we really appreciate it by you giving us the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, 5.1, motion to approve bond for the community center. And I believe the, there's a water, um, portion and a fire truck in there.
That, Madam Chair, I'm not sure, do we have another meeting at 7:00 we're supposed to go to? I'm just not sure what the, how we're handling that.
Yes, well, 7:05 is, who's on first at the planning board meeting, Derek?
Um, there's a, there's another developer that's going before the governor's landing proposal. Probably, you know, the governor's landing, we're guessing, it'll start between 7:15 and 7:30. So we probably have 15 minutes more of business. So we, Kenny has a very quick presentation for the bond, and then I think after that, we can get through the other items very quickly.
Okay. Is Kenny on?
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yep, we got you.
If I could share my screen.
Can everybody see, uh, my slides?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, we have, we had a new bonds and we had refunding bonds of 12.2 million. Uh, I know you have a busy agenda, so I will be quick. Uh, so we put out a, essentially it's a bids. We received eight bids on the 12.2 million. Uh, we had a water project related to Hartford Ave. If you recall, we had a ban that's actually maturing a week from today and also a fire rescue pumper truck, um, as well. We had a ban and that's also maturing a week from today. So what we did was we took the water mains and the rescue pumper truck and we rolled that into a larger borrowing, a general obligation bond. So part of that borrowing, we, we received eight bids and the winning bid was for Morgan Stanley Company uh, with a, uh, true interest cost of 1.864912. Just as you can see, uh, you know, it's a very low rate environment we have right now. Interest rates are really, uh, really favorable for the town. And our, the second bid was also favorable. It came in at 1.913, uh, you know, as well. And we also had, um, a water and wastewater refunding bonds as well. Uh, over the next six years, we'll realize savings of $55,603. Um, and then also, as part of this as well, as you know, there was the community center, um, as well, which was, um, 11 million and that'll be, uh, borrowing over 25, uh, years. So just give you like a, a summary of the timeline of the general obligation bond. This was a, um, a team effort. Uh, we started back in September. Uh, Deb and I, we, we talked to our financial advisor. Um, and then we had to put together the official statement. Um, and then, you know, the attorneys, bond counsel, they also reviewed that in November. And we also had the conference call in November, which went very well. Um, and I just want to thank Deb, Kelly, Jim Broschu, Paul Flaherty, Derek, Sandy, and then also Chair Gwinell as well. It was a team effort. Uh, we, we had a rating call with, uh, S&amp;P and they went, uh, very, very well. Um, and then on December 8th, that's when we actually had the, uh, we received the bids. And again, Morgan Stanley was the winning bid. And then we, here we are today, uh, with the approved award, uh, to Morgan Stanley. And then the sale will happen on December 20th. And here just shows you the winning bid, Morgan Stanley, uh, the 1.864, uh, 912. Uh, just give you a summary of the 12.2. Um, as I mentioned, the, the interest rates are really low. They range from 1.86 to 2.01. Community Center, 25-year debt service schedule, Hartford Ave, a 20-year payback. Uh, the fire rescue truck is five years. And as I mentioned earlier, the refunding of the water and wastewater. Um, the savings are over the next six years, um, you know, about $55,603 of savings. Um, and also there was a premium as a part of the sale as well for $985,000. Uh, just to get into the, uh, the report, S, uh, the S&amp;P created, uh, rating report. Uh, we were, um, given a double A-plus, um, stable, um, rating, which is the second highest rating to a, uh, AAA. And as part of that report, they did note the, uh, the town's, uh, growing residential tax base. Um, you know, the, the, well, the town is growing, as you, you know, you heard tonight, the project, um, you know, uh, tonight, and the, you know, the town has, uh, definitely been expanding. Uh, so they did take note of that. And also looking at the, our, our financial management, um, they did look at our, um, at our operating results, which were, were very positive. Um, and also our financial controls, which they do view that the overall financial management of the environment is, is strong. Uh, they also did ask us about our, uh, you know, our reserves, our stabilization fund and about the, uh, the 10%. Um, we did let them know that the town is committed, um, to reach that 10%. That's something that they, you know, that they do, um, review. And we did mention to them at the last, uh, you know, town meeting, at the special town meeting, we did meet our 10% and they'll be looking for that going forward. And, and we did let them know that, you know, the Board of Selectmen, you know, they are committed. And then Chair Gwinell did do a great job letting them know about that commitment as well, about achieving the, uh, the 10%. Uh, just far as outlook, um, you know, as far as increasing to, um, you know, from a double A to a triple A, uh, they're gonna look at our different economic indicators um, and look at other, um, you know, surrounding cities and towns and, and see how we, uh, we compare. I mean, that's something that they'll continue, uh, to do and that we are, we are doing very well. Um, also downside, um, scenario, uh, they'll look at our budgetary performance. Um, we've been doing very well budgetarily. So if they do see, um, you know, our budgetary performance, you know, a decline or even our reserves declining, that might be a, um, a red flag. But overall, the, the entire sale, the entire, uh, from beginning to end, um, you know, it went very, very well. We're very happy with the results. We're very happy with the interest. Uh, typically, like last year, we had two bids. Uh, when we had the, if you remember a year ago, we had the refunding and it was the, the town hall, um, debt. We had two bids. Um, and this time around, we had eight bids. So that's very, uh, very impressive. Uh, so there's definitely a lot of interest and it was just great to see that the town was able to take advantage, um, of the historic low rates, um, at, at this time. So I just want to let the board know, uh, that we did very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny.
Awesome, such great stuff, as always.
Could we get a motion to approve the bond for 12.2 million?
I did have one quick question. Uh, Kenny, if you could just talk for a minute just about that 985K premium, how does that work? Um, and is that something that's, something we receive in, in addition to, or how does that work?
Yeah, so the, um, the premium, that, so originally, we were thinking we're going to need 12.9 million. Um, however, uh, with the premium, that's something that will decrease. So we're going to use those funds to decrease the amount, the actual amount that we're going to borrow. Um, and also too, uh, there's also bills associated with borrowing. Um, fortunately, S&amp;P, the, the attorneys, they don't, this is, you know, this doesn't happen, um, you know, uh, free. So this is something that we also need, and we don't budget for this as well because we just don't know how much it's going to cost. So we can take the premiums, we can pay, we'll pay for the rating call, we'll pay for the bond council, um, you know, review, um, as well. So those are just the typical bond issue costs. Um, so we use that to decrease the amount of the borrowing um, and also, um, pay the, uh, the costs associated with, um, issuing the bonds.
Brett, you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, I'm good, I'm ready to make a motion.
We get the motion, please?
I, I make a motion that we approve the 12.2, uh, bond borrowing as presented.
I would second the motion, Steven Mattelli, aye?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye, action.
I think Derek had something he wanted to say.
I just, once you're done with the vote. Like, Kenny, there was the document that was linked to the agenda. Do we need to read each one of these or the motion that was just presented, is that adequate to cover what we're trying to accomplish? The document that says vote of the Board of Selectmen, do they need to read each one of those paragraphs?
Either, the way I've seen this, either they can read each paragraph or perhaps if we show it, if we present it on the screen, so then, um, everybody can see it. I think maybe then you can waive the reading. I mean, if Kelly wants to also weigh in on that.
Can we make the motion, Kelly, as presented? What's been given to us for each of the bond?
I would, yeah, um, I would, I would be comfortable doing a certified vote if the bond company needed it, that the vote was taken, has, has presented on documentation.
Okay.
Uh, cause it, cause it's really, actually, now that I read that, thank you for putting that up, Kenny. That's actually Sandy, because it's the club to the Board of Selectmen that needs to vote that, that needs to sign that. That's the vote is taken.
Yes.
Okay.
So should we amend the motion to include that verbiage? That it is inclusive of the document that is on the screen at this point in time? Or what, what are your thoughts?
Let's do it that way, that'll cover us.
Brett, would you mind re-motioning?
Um, yeah, I thought I covered that in as presented, but I guess I will say that again. So I make a motion to approve the $12.2 million bond borrowing as presented, uh, and based on what's being shown on the screen right now in the attachment and was included in the original agenda for the meeting.
I would second the motion, Steven Mattelli, aye?
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous action? Thank you, Kenny.
Thank you, I just have one more thing to, uh, to add. Um, so we do need to return all the bond information, uh, back to our financial advisor. Um, so I believe there are some outstanding signatures. So if, um, if, you know, if you haven't signed the, the bond documents, if you could please stop by the church's office tomorrow, uh, to sign them so we can return that back to our FA so we can, uh, complete the sale.
Thank you, Kenny.
And thank you.
And that's time-sensitive.
Yes, very time-sensitive.
Okay, so in the office will be open tomorrow till 5:00, I take it? Okay.
I expect, I expect full, ongoing and repetitive harassment, Derek, until that signing is completed for me. I'm speaking for me, not for Steve. But I've got it.
It will, it will be done. Attention to my phone anyway, so go right, you feel free to, I'll catch it, I'll catch it Thursday morning or whatever you have to say. I'm joking, of course, folks at home that are listening. I pay very close attention to my phone.
Yeah.
Well, moving on, we have a motion. we have a motion, um, open and close the warrant, December 14th to January 28th. Any information, you have any more information on that, Derek, or?
Just want to open the warrant as soon as we can, close it so I give folks six weeks' notice. But again, you know, when we printed the annual calendar back in June, we gave forenotice to all of our boards and committee members and departments in the community at large that this is when we'd be opening and closing the warrant. So those folks that need to prepare articles, pretty much had over six months to start preparing articles. So and, and the boards and the, and the departments know this as well because I met with them last week to explain this.
I would make a motion to open the annual town meeting warrant today, December 14th. Brett Simas, aye.
And I would amend that to close the warrant on January 28th. Stephen Mattelli and I.
We get a second?
Yep, I'll second that amended motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous action. Next we have the ice-out challenge request. That's every year, isn't it, Derek?
Yes, I think Mr. Moore is here, um, representing the men's club for that request.
Is he here?
Yes, good evening, board. I'm Vice President of Upton Men's Club and we're running the charity for the first time this year. I'm seeking your approval to put out the ice-out challenge sign and sort of timing device on Pratt Pond when the ice is safe to do so.
Okay. Any other questions?
And here, it's a great, great fundraiser and fun to watch.
Can we take a vote to approve it? Motion?
I make a motion to approve the Upton Men's Club request to put Frosty out on Pratt Pond's ice when it is safe to do so. Brett Simas, aye.
I would second the motion. Stephen Mattelli and I.
Maureen Duennell, aye. Unanimous action. Thank you very much. Okay. You should be all set. We need a motion to file and accept assistance to firefly this grant?
Can we hold off on that? I talked to Chief Riley today. He's working with the fire department to fine-tune that grant application. It will be prepared for your next meeting in January.
Okay. How about a motion to approve the snow plow list? Did anybody go over that?
Uh, Mr. Westgate is here to talk about the list.
Mr. Westgate.
So this is our annual vote from the Board of Selectmen. In July, we posted the list and there were a few roads that needed some brushing back and some potholes filled. And they have done so. And the, all the roads in the yellow on your list are ready for winter operations from the DPW. So if you could vote the DPW authorization to provide snow and ice removal services for this winter, I'd appreciate it.
Any questions?
And then, as you said, just the ones in yellow?
Yeah, those are the ones that we do every single year, Steve. We added a section of Russell last year, if you recall, as we discovered a portion of that wasn't town-accepted.
Okay. And no other questions?
Get a motion?
I make a motion.
Go ahead, Brett.
I make a motion to approve the plowing of the private ways listed in the private ways inspection report 2021 and highlighted in yellow. Brett Simas, aye.
I would second the motion. Stephen Mattelli and I.
I'll, I'll say aye. Unanimous action. And the next is to attend and participate at the planning board meeting. So I believe we adjourned to go to that meeting, correct?
Uh, I wouldn't adjourn because then you won't be allowed to participate as a board. And certainly you could participate as a community member. But if you recess to go to the planning board meeting, then you can participate as a board. Uh, and then at the end of the discussions relative to governor's landing, then I would recommend you adjourn.
Okay. Can we get a vote to recess to go to the planning board meeting?
Okay, I would make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recess for the purposes of attending the planning board meeting. Stephen Mattelli and I.
Brett Simas, aye. Second the motion.
Maureen Duennell, aye. Unanimous action. See you there.